Call the meeting to order, regular session. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your equality for which it stands, without question, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome Pastor Don Lawrence for the dedication.
That's great. Heavenly Father, as we have recently passed the threshold of a brand-new year, undoubtedly there are some unique challenges that we face this year. And we ask, Lord, that you would help us to not allow those challenges to obscure the many, many opportunities which this year also holds for us. And to that end, we pray for these leaders of our community, that you would guide them, that you would give them wisdom, that you would give them a vision, that you would lead them as they lead our community. Not only would you be with them in the decisions they make this evening, but throughout this year. And we pray this in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Pastor Lawrence from Crest Church. Roll call, please.
Mayor Schlumpf.
Here.
Councilmember Ashambo.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Dickey.
Here.
Councilmember Cantino.
Here.
Councilmember LaGaye.
Here.
Councilmember McMahon.
Here.
Very nice. Before we get into the meet-a-thing, I would recognize that we've got a couple birthdays up here in council on the month of January. Councilmember Hanson, on the 18th.
Thank you for reminding me.
There you go. It's a highlight for us. And Councilmember Dickey, happy birthday.
Thank you.
Coming up in another week or so.
It is that day.
It is that day.
Tuesday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
We'll get started here with public appearances, presentations, first by El Salvador's honorary council, Enrique Melendez, regarding the status of the country, the Fountain Hills Rotary Club donation, the Mayo Clinic and Scottsdale Healthcare visit, and objectives under El Salvador's new government following their March 2009 election. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers and staff, good evening. Enrique Melendez, honorary council, Republic of El Salvador, and I live on Hawk Drive. Been there for 15 years. Each year, the Foreign Ministry requests that I make a presentation to the government leaders and to the community where we have a sister-city relationship. So tonight is my opportunity, and I want to thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to be here. And while I'm thanking people, I'd like to thank three former mayors of our community. The first one, Mayor Miles, I believe many years ago was responsible for making Fountain Hills an international community. During his leadership, we began the relationship with Belgium. And it's all about heart, and I'm going to talk a little bit about heart and get into the meat of what government's doing. But Mayor Miles first went with me to El Salvador, he's been there three times, to meet with the Minister of Tourism to request permission to have exclusivity on some of his photographs, which we did, and today they're hanging in major embassies throughout the world, including the embassy in El Salvador and DC. The second time he went down, he took his wife, Jackie, and spent 10 days on his own and took over 4,000 pictures of the country. And the third time, he went down with me again to present a check of $14,000, which came out of our community, people like you who were very kind and had great heart in giving funds to our sister-city following their earthquake in 2003. The second one was Sharon Morgan. Mayor Morgan, I served with for a while, and she, of course, is the president of the Sister City Association. And under her leadership, we started our relationship with Germany. Mayor Morgan has had a tremendous amount of influence in the relationship that we have developed as a government, as a city, and as people from El Salvador and Fountain Hills. Through her guidance and the leadership of President of the Chamber, Frank Farrar, we've been able to have stands during the fairs, and they've been very, very helpful in developing the arts from a foreign nation to our community and to the East Valley. She's also been very helpful with the student program. As you know, we've had three students last year who were here for six weeks, and with the help of the good Lord, in two more weeks, we're going to have three more students that are going to be here for three months with separate families studying English, and this is so valuable, as I've spoken to you before in the council meeting. And the last mayor I want to recognize is Mayor Wally Nichols. What a man. The guy has a heart of gold. Right off the bat, Wally stepped up to the plate, and he's been to El Salvador two times. The first time to select a sister-city, which we did eventually, but Wally, right from the beginning, put his heart and soul into believing what the people of Atacu needed, believing what the council and the mayor, who was here with us, needed. And I'll never forget that. All three of these people are well-respected and loved by not only the people of Atacu, the government of El Salvador, as well as my family. And on a side comment, when we were down and Mayor Nichols met with our president, he knew he was an Arizona Cardinals fan, so he took him a football, and he took him a baseball cap, and I got a phone call today from staff saying, "Go Cardinals."
All right.
Next, I'm going to talk about the Fountain Hills community. Three and a half years ago, the American Legion, through its membership, put together some funds that were geared for the battalion of troops that El Salvador had in Iraq. I was very proud to present this donation to the Minister of Defense, and it was well-appreciated. That was the start of what the community effort was all about. Secondly, we had an earthquake relief fund, and again, as I stated, we brought down a check of $14,000, and a lot of the people I mentioned contributed greatly. The student program, the clothing, the trips, the Chamber Commerce, what their booths, their stands, which promote goodwill and the exchange of culture and friendship between nations. Two years ago, a group of 38 doctors from the Mayo Clinic and Scottsdale Healthcare came to El Salvador and performed about 115 surgeries in a small city. One of the doctors is a brother of one of our council members, and we're very proud to have him. Well, guess what happened? They came back again this year in October, another about 108 surgeries to the tune of about $1.4 million pro bono. Out of this visit comes another organization, which is called SOS. And Mayor Morgan and I had the opportunity to meet with the staff, with the governing board, and they will be leaving for El Salvador tomorrow and spend a week there to do and explore issues regarding energy, education, medical services, and technology. This is all from Fountain Hills. The other issue that I want to talk to you about is the Fountain Hills Rotary Club. About eight months ago, a gentleman by the name Art Ammon came to me and said, you know, Rick, he said, "We have a container of wheelchairs that we would like to send to Mexico." And I stopped him immediately. I said, "Mexico? No way. You've got to send them to El Salvador. We have over 250,000 handicapped persons, many of them who suffered their injuries during the war that we had." And so with the help of the Rotary Club here, and I applaud them, we will be getting these wheelchairs, the container, in two weeks. I also like to thank the parents council that have stepped up and have had our students here and will have our students here coming month. Their heart and soul that goes into this and their time and finances and sacrifices are respected and appreciated. People like Roy and Deb Kinsey, who volunteered to have the artisans stay in their homes. Those are special people to the people of El Salvador. And I want to thank the local newspaper, the Fountain Hills Times, because right from the beginning, Alan Krujczank and Mike Sharnow and Bob Burns have been there with respect to reporting on El Salvador. Unlike a major newspaper here, whose assistant editor and whose reporter, who handles our area, stated to me that they were interested in reporting on El Salvador. So I called them, left messages, and yet they did not have the courtesy to respond to the calls. Kudos to the Times. Lastly, to the staff of the town, you spoke about recently, Councilmember Ashambo. I think we do have the best staff, and I want to applaud them for the work that they've done with me, not only while I was on the council, but also what they've done during the term of Mayor Nichols and the dignitaries we had. And of course, that includes Captain Kleinheinz and the support the Sheriff of Ohio has given us with respect to security when dignitaries come to our city. I have a couple of final announcements. On January the 1st, President Saka announced the troop withdrawal of Salvadoran troops from Iraq. On August 2003, the first deployment left, and since then, they've had 11 different battalions who have served next to our troops and now are coming home. Five and a half years of service along U.S. and other coalition forces. These troops constructed 350 projects, reconstruction projects, which impacted seven million Iraqis, a project of $26 million, and these projects were funded by the British government and the American government. This Sunday, we have some major issues taking place in El Salvador. Mayor and council, we have the mayoral elections and the congressional elections. And on March the 12th, we have the presidential elections. President Saka will no longer be our president. I feel I wanted to report to you because I've had a lot of people in the community ask me, "What happens if the country goes communist?" And there's a chance it may, just like in any election. We won't know until the votes are counted and until the last vote is counted. But we're hoping that this Sunday, our mayor of a sister-city, Atacu, will be reelected, and that that will set the stage for the democracy to continue, because we are the last country that is a democracy in that region, as you will know. If indeed the likelihood that the country goes to the left, I have the guarantee of our government and the incoming, or either one of the incoming members who are going to be president, that we will continue to honor Fountain Hills-Atacu relationship. And we look forward to having you visit our country and to understand that what you've done in the past is appreciated from the heart, and we respect and have a tremendous amount of love for all of you. So thank you for letting me express these thoughts. I will make comments not with the same heart that I did tonight in Prescott, Arizona, because that's a second sister-city. Fountain Hills is my home, and I'm very proud to be part of the community, Mayor, Council. Thank you. I'll take questions if you want me to.
Any questions, Senator?
Yeah, Rick, is there a possibility that a more leftist government will be elected?
Well, Councilmember McMahon, you know, I hate to predict because I've been proven wrong before. I would say right now it's dead even. The leftist government was up by 11 points about four months ago. Now, about a week ago, they were down to three points, and now it's dead even. But the proof will be this Sunday, when the mayoral congressional elections are held. That will set the stage for...
Elections of Congress.
Congress and mayors.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much for coming out and putting us into this relationship as well.
Thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Rick.
Next item is proclamation recognizing Kate Zanin for her service to the town of Fountain Hills. As we know, she's moving on, and we're going to miss her, and I'm looking forward to reading this proclamation to honor Kate's work she's done for our town. Whereas Kate Zanin became employed by the town of Fountain Hills on August 16, 2004, and whereas over the past four years and five months, Ms. Zanin has held the positions of planner, assistant to the town manager, interim town manager, and again, assistant to the town manager, and whereas Ms. Zanin has demonstrated an extraordinary work ethic and total dedication to her responsibilities during her employ, and whereas Ms. Zanin has faithfully and conscientiously served the citizens of the town of Fountain Hills and contributed to numerous projects which will continue to have an impact in our town. Now therefore, I, J.T. Schlumpf, Mayor of the town of Fountain Hills, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the gratitude of the town council and citizens of Fountain Hills for the meritorious service and loyalty rendered by Kate Zanin to this community dated this 15th day of January 2009. Kate, thank you very much, and the best of luck as you move on very shortly. Thanks for your service to our town. Wow.
Mary.
Yes, and there will be a get-together next week to not only thank Kate, but also welcome our administrator, I'm sorry, our economic development administrator that's been hired. So make sure you partake in that next week.
Mayor?
Yes.
I think it's appropriate to mention also that among the three positions that Kate occupied or performed, also the duties of deputy town manager also.
All right.
So important to note that.
Good.
Done it all.
All right, we've got another proclamation here, and it is about Pony Express Days. Whereas Pony Express played a particularly important and colorful part of the history of the West dating back between 1860 and 1861, and whereas each year, the Pony Express riders are remembered with a commemorative ride by the members of the Hash Knife Gang traveling from Holbrook to Scottsdale, with Fountain Hills being the next-to-last stop on their trek. Now therefore, January 29, 2009, is hereby proclaimed to be Pony Express Day in the town of Fountain Hills. All town residents, visitors, and residents and visitors of surrounding areas are invited to join in festivities and dress western to commemorate this part of our history in the West. In witness whereof, I here too set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the town of Fountain Hills, Maricopa County, Arizona, this 15th day of January 2009. That's a fun event as well. If you haven't taken that in, come on down and watch them ride up the avenue. Are there any speakers cards for all of the public?
Yes, Mayor. Sharon Morgan.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Not to be redundant, but I'm here on behalf of Sister Cities. We became very attached to the three students in six weeks, so I'm wondering just how attached we're going to get in three months. Probably more so, it'd be even harder to see them go home. But a couple of other things that we have done is the last trip that I took down there, you may all recall all the dental work that one of the dentists here in town did pro bono about, I believe there were 50 cavities among the three. They'd never seen a dentist. He took care of all this, so that sparked something. We took down almost 2,000 toothbrushes, 2,000 tubes of toothpaste, dental thaws, and this was all, all donated by the dental community here in Fountain Hills. Kudos to them. We also took down clothes. We also are getting ready to start up a blanket drive, because up in the mountains, it gets cold, and when you're sleeping on the floor, or a dirt floor, some of them do, a blanket, be it used or whatever, as long as it's clean, means a whole lot. So we are going to be kicking that off. Hopefully, we'll have to find ways to get containers of blankets, coats, pillows, sheets. This group that Rick mentioned to you, SOS, through one of their organizers, they have contacts. We have now been told we will get all of the blankets and things from nine hotels when they refurbish their hotels. That is everything from bath mats all the way up. So we will have to have bins. So I just want to say thank you to the town, to the town citizens, for their support. This is gaining, gaining popularity, publicity, and all kinds of things. And to the town officials for keeping us in this trouble budget time, for keeping us in mind when you put the pencils to the paper. We thank you in advance, and we thank you for all you have done for us.
Thank you, Mayor Morgan. Thanks for your energy to put into Sister Cities, and I'll just clarify the generosity that all these organizations and the former mayors and yourself do. Travels and trips down there are not funded through the town. They're funded on these individuals' own, and it's not inexpensive to travel down to Central America. So, you know, they're putting a great amount of their treasures into that as well as their heart. So thank you very much for the Sister Cities update. Anyone else to call the public?
No, Mayor.
All right. Move on to the consent agenda, request a motion to approve as listed. Mayor, we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
All right, roll call, Deb.
Councilmember Dickey.
Aye.
Mayor Schlumpf.
Aye.
Councilmember LaGaye.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Cantino.
Here.
Councilmember Ashambo.
Aye.
Councilmember McMahon.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, move to the regular agenda. Consideration of possible alternative location for the previously donated and accepted sculpture titled Freedom. Mark, we have a presentation.
Mayor Schlumpf and members of the council. Back on December the 4th, you may recall that there were a number of pieces that I brought forward for your consideration. All of those pieces were accepted, and all the locations were approved, with the exception of this particular piece. I included in your packet a copy of the original piece, just so it'd be fresh in your memory. The directive that we were given that evening was to work with the Public Art Committee in trying to have an alternative location brought forward because of some of the concerns that were raised at that particular meeting. The group did that. They have deliberated in a couple of different spots and have come forward with a recommendation that's in your packet for a location potentially of the piece along the Avenue of the Fountain, just west of the turnaround area. Again, in your packet, I also included a psych map to kind of help you locate a little bit. Also, there's a photograph in there of the actual location, which is right adjacent to the fountain. It wouldn't be placed on top of that particular fountain, it would be placed to the side because of some pipes that run through there and Public Works was concerned about. So that is the location that's under consideration this evening. I should also note that we revised the cost of insulation down from what was originally proposed in the last one. It is still a little bit more expensive than we typically see on an insulation. This one, because if you recall, it's to be a combination of, on the interior, a concrete block and then covered with native stone, so there's a lot involved to putting the piece in, so it looks very representative of what an eagle's nest might look out in nature. I did also want to mention that there was an additional change from the last time we met in that kind of fortuitous discussion that took place between vice mayor and a lady that I believe was associated with his church, and from that, an Eileen Rankle stepped forward and indicated that she was interested in perhaps supporting the donation of this particular piece. She has since graciously written a check in memory of her son, so the cost of that $19,900 that was originally going to come out of the 1 percent fund has now disappeared and is a donation instead. So we're seeking only tonight to ask for your approval for the location and the approval of an installation, including tax of $4,200.
Thank you very much.
With that, I would gladly answer any questions.
Any questions on this item? Wait, Mayor? Mark, I just want to mention that Eileen is here this evening, if you want to recognize her. Hey, Eileen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very good. Any questions for staff? Anyone from the public?
No, Mayor.
All right. I'll look for a motion to...
Motion to approve.
To approve the location...
Second.
Oh, hold on a moment, I got to read the... Thank you very much. Look for a motion to approve the location of bronze sculpture titled Freedom in the Avenue of the Fountain at the location recommended by the Public Art Committee and authorize the expenditure up to $4,200 for the installation to come from the 1 percent Public Art Fund. We still have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right.
Second.
All right. Everyone in favor? Indicate for saying aye.
Aye.
Post.
Mayor, 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mark.
Next item, consideration of temporary use permit for the Town Center Merchants Group for repeating outdoor retail sales events for 2009. Jean, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is a request to consider a temporary use permit, TU 2008-10, for outdoor retail sales in the town center area. Kate Zanin, on behalf of the Town Center Merchants Group, is requesting that Town Center merchants be allowed to conduct outdoor retail sales and displays on days coinciding with the many holidays and special events occurring in the town. Most temporary use permits are approved administratively. However, multiple recurring like-use events, such as these outdoor retail sales events, require review and approval by the town council, as stipulated in the zoning order in section 5 dot 16 dot B dot 4. These events are for calendar year 2009 and will run from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. on the dates listed on the spreadsheet that's attached in your packet. Merchandise displayed and sold must be associated with the business itself, and as outlined in Kate's narrative, special signage will be allowed on Swallow Boulevard and Abbey of the Fountain for up to six events. Plus, each business will be allowed signage that meets the current sign ordinance guidelines. This is the downtown map with the various uses, but the areas that the events can occur are in the commercially used areas. And there's really three areas. The area on the left towards the top is in the Safeway shopping area, and then in the center is the traditional downtown area that we're familiar with. And also, adjacent to the lake there, east of Swallow Boulevard, including a small area south of El Lago, the Plaza Fountain site and that area there, will be allowed to have these events. Here are the dates being requested and the events they coincide with. Now Kate's advised me that one of the dates is an error, that being the Valentine's Day. That event is in your spreadsheet as February 14 through the 16th. It should be February 13 through the 15th. I would ask that if the town council approves the temporary use permit, that it approves it with the change to Valentine's Day, as I've indicated. The request was posted, notices were mailed, there were no objections or inquiries, so staff recommends that the town council approve the temporary use permit for repeating outdoor retail sales for events for 2009 for the town center, case TU 2008-10, subject to stipulations outlined in the staff report, and the corrections to the Valentine's date from February 14 through 16 to February 13 through the 15. I'll be glad to answer your questions, and Kate's also in the audience, as you wish.
Thank you very much. Jean, any questions for staff? Jean, any questions for staff regarding this continuous retail activity?
Yes.
Anyone from the public? Any part?
No, Mayor.
Must have been pretty clear. Oh, yes. Councilmember Dickey.
I move approve temporary use permit, TU 2008-10, for the Town Center Merchants Group for repeating outdoor retail sales events for 2009, subject to the stipulations and the date change for the Valentine's Day to the 13th to the 15th, outlined in the staff report.
How about a second?
Second.
All right. Any other discussion? Everyone in favor? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post.
Mayor, seven zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Jean.
Thank you, Jean.
May I make a quick comment, please?
Yes.
Thank you. I just, I realize you've already approved the permit, but I did want to make a really quick comment about the permit. As you know, Town Center started trying to form and coordinate ourselves last June, and we kicked it off with an open house in July. And since then, we've been working on a variety of projects, getting more businesses working together. And this is one of those great first projects, is establishing a schedule where the businesses can all come together and support other events in our community, as you'll see many of the weekends land, the same as some of our concerts in the parks or other events in our community, and kind of help achieve one of Council's goals, which is to continue to grow events and work together and just create more traffic in our downtown area. So this permit, hopefully, while it's the first year of doing it for the area, will be the start of getting more events scheduled on a monthly basis. So I just wanted to thank you on behalf of the group for approving it, and we do have a couple of members in the audience tonight that are grateful as well. So thank you.
Is there any way of an open house?
I was just gonna ask if I could make a comment.
Yeah.
On Tuesday evening, 5:30 to 7 o'clock at the Community Center, we will be having another business open house, similar to one we held in July, inviting all the businesses in the Town Center area, or any other business in the community, or a member of our community who's interested, to come learn a little bit more about what we're doing. We're going to be showcasing message board, as well as a website that the businesses can use as a communication tool, and also going over our new sign ordinance regulation for the businesses. So I hope anyone who's interested will come and attend that open house. There should be some more media going out about it. It's on our website, on Channel 11. The Chamber is releasing it, and we're also handing out flyers, so.
That Tuesday the 20th at 5:30?
Tuesday the 20th, 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. at the Community Center.
All right. That was a good event last night, very informative and energetic.
Thank you.
Thanks again for your energy you put into that.
Thank you. And Mayor, Council, I'll also take just a quick moment to thank you for the proclamation. You said very kind words and lots of accolades, and it's truly been an honor to work for this community and a privilege that I'll always cherish having, so thank you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda, we'll hear a report that'll cover items seven through 10. Item seven is consideration of special event application for the Thunderbird Artists Annual Fountain Hills Fine Arts and Wine Affair. It's scheduled to be held on the Avenue, March 20 through March 22. Next item, consideration of special event liquor license application submitted by the downtown business community for sponsoring the Thunderbird Artists Fine Art Fair, which is scheduled for 20 through the 22nd. And the next item is consideration of Wine Festival Licensed Wine Fair License Application by Dennis Munchella for participation in the Thunderbird Arts Annual Fountain Hills Fine Art and Wine Affair. And the last one is consideration of a Wine Festival Licensed Wine Fair License Application submitted by Eric Womsky, Page Spring Sellers, for participation in the Thunderbird Arts Annual Fountain Hills Fine Art and Wine Affair. Welcome, Julie.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. In keeping with the council's strategic plan initiative of strengthening our small-town identity, the Fountain Hills Fine Art and Wine Affair on March 20th to 22nd is another initiative, another community event. And just a couple of things to note on that event. The event was reviewed by the Special Events Committee, which included law enforcement and fire. The number-one goal is ensuring that the Chamber event is successful, at the same time providing safety and well-being of the residents and visitors. So the Special Event Committee approved it and is recommending approval by the council. Some staff members will be required to work in excess of their regularly scheduled hours, but this service is provided to the Fountain Hills Downtown Business Community as part of our contribution to the special event process. For the event, the north side of Avenue of the Fountains will be closed to vehicular traffic from Thursday night at 5:00 p.m. until Monday morning at 7:00 a.m., and there will be barricades and entrances for patrons to participate. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Councilman McMahon?
Yeah, the area will be fenced off too, right?
Mayor Schlum, members of the council, yes, it will be fenced, completely fenced.
As in past years.
Yes.
Any other questions? Yeah, Councilman, Councilperson Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. Julie, can you clarify? I couldn't quite tell by the diagram the way the fencing occurs, does it allow for access to the businesses along the north side of the avenue? I, I know in, in past years, there, there were issues where the fencing basically was blocking off the businesses.
Mayor Schlum, Councilman Hanson, I think in this case, I have to double-check the map. The fencing will be those areas where the alcohol will be served, but the, the businesses are participating, so they're going to be allowed to have sidewalk sales, so they will actually be participating in this event as well.
So they're integrated into the area?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Cantino?
Yes. Are they going to charge again to get into the Wine Fest?
Mayor Schlum, Councilman Cantino, Fountain Hills residents will not be charged to get in. Out of, out of town residents will be charged, but Fountain Hills residents will not.
Any, any one from the public on any of these four items?
No, Mayor.
All right. There are a lot of parties on our agenda tonight. So what I'll look for first here, if there's no more questions or discussion, is first a motion to, a move to approve the Fountain Hills Fifth Annual Fine Art and Wine Affair as stipulated by staff.
Second.
All in favor? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Next one, look for a motion, a move to approve the special event liquor license application for the downtown business community as presented. A move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. And next item, look for a motion to approve the Wine Festival Licensed Wine Art License, Wine Fair License for Page Spring Sellers as presented.
Second.
Second.
Everyone in favor? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. And the last item is look for a motion to approve the Wine Festival Licensed Wine Fair License for Cocopelli Winery as presented. A move.
Second.
All in favor? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. All right. Party time on March 20th through the 22nd. Approved. All right, next we'll talk about some more parties and call on Julie again, and she discusses items 11 and 12 on our agenda. Welcome, Julie.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Again, this is a special event that is, this is about the 26th year that the Chamber of Commerce will be holding this Great Fair. It's a very popular event, and the committee has looked at it and approved it with some stipulations, and the Chamber has met those stipulations. And so therefore, if there's any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
All right. And then what we are considering here is item 11, consideration of special event application for the Great Fair, sponsored by the Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce, to be held February 20 through the 22nd, and a coordinated special event liquor license application submitted by Bruce Thieling from VFW Post 7507 as a component in the Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce's Great Artists Special Event by sponsoring two beer gardens at the intersection of Swire Boulevard and Avenue of the Fountains, with the other beer garden located at Swire Boulevard and Palisades Boulevard. Any one from the public on these items?
No, Mayor.
Any questions for staff on the Great Fair? I think we are pretty familiar with the Great Fair. Very good. I'll look for a motion to approve-
Motion to approve.
Actually, I need to do it.
Second.
We have to approve each one separately here. Let's see, look for a motion to approve the Chamber of Commerce Great Fair as stipulated by staff.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. All in favor? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Mayor, seven zero.
Thank you. And next motion looking for is to approve the two special event liquor license applications for the veterans of Forum Wars, Post 7507 as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post.
Mayor, seven zero.
Thank you. And now party time has been approved for February 20th through the 22nd, as well as just a little, a little bit of art thrown in there on the Avenue and Swire. Thank you. Next item, we've got one report for two items from Mr. Raymond Reese. Welcome. Looking, we're gonna be talking about public, a public hearing to receive comments on ordinance 9, 09-01, amending Chapter 8 Outdoor Lighting Controls relating to the general requirements and prohibitions.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. I am here to present information to you for the consideration of amending Chapter 8 of the lighting ordinance. How did, how did we get here? Mid-year last year, we received a citizen complaint about possible excessive lighting at a local business here in town. The code enforcement officer went out, did their investigation, brought their information back, and we determined that there was possibly excess lighting on that building. Staff contacted the building owner. We also contacted the architect on the project. The architect was asked to come in, and we talked with them about the lighting on the building. It was determined that the lighting on the building was compact fluorescent lighting, and it did exceed the allowed wattage for that lighting application. The architect on the building did indicate to us that there were a number of buildings that currently have this same type of lighting, and that the industry standards were changing for, for lighting, and that we possibly needed to look at our lighting ordinance. So what we did is we went out and did our own investigation of some of the buildings around town, and we did note that there are some similar lightings that were on the building that was in question. And these are fairly new buildings here in town. And here's some lighting that was put on after some of the older buildings to try to, you know, reduce their, their energy consumption, which is a good thing. Staff at that time made the determination that we did need to revisit our lighting ordinance, and we took this information that we gathered to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their consideration. After three meetings that we held with the Planning and Zoning Commission, one of which was a work-study session, and we went over extensively the lighting ordinance and what we thought was going to be the best fit for the town, taking into consideration wanting to become more energy efficient, knowing that standards are changing within the industry, and also that federal standards will be changing for lighting itself, for incandescent lighting. After those three meetings, the commission did come with the recommendation that we bring our ordinance forward to the council for consideration. During, if I can go back, during that meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission, it was, it was a very enlightening-
No pun intended.
Yeah, yeah, no pun intended. It was a very, a good discussion, and we, we actually did a lighting board so that the commission could truly understand what it was that they were looking at. So I, I think they did a very good job at coming to their conclusion. So with that, our, the staff's recommendation to, to the council is to approve the ordinance 09-01, the proposed amendment to Chapter 8 of the zoning ordinance for outdoor lighting controls. And my presentation is complete, and I will answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much, Raymond. Any questions for staff? Vice Mayor.
Raymond, as we change our ordinance and we begin encouraging the use of fluorescent bulbs for obvious reasons, energy efficiency, environmentally sound, so forth and so on, more and more people are utilizing this same type of fluorescent lighting in their, their homes. My daughters appreciate those, curlicues, they think they're kind of interesting looking. I guess a question I have, what is, from an environmental perspective, and I know you're involved in that work from a staff perspective, will have more lights, fluorescent lights to dispose of, which contain mercury, which presents a whole other scenario? Have we looked at that from the town perspective? Are there ways we're gonna educate business owners that will be using this? Help me out with that.
Yeah, Mayor Schlum, Vice Mayor Leger, staff is looking into possible disposal of the compact fluorescent lighting. Currently, the local hardware store Ace Hardware does accept all the compact fluorescent bulbs, along with other fluorescent bulbs for disposal, so that is available for citizens currently. We are looking in the, in the near future to possibly partner with some local businesses or maybe get donations of some other kind to purchase a bulb pressure for the town so we can provide that service for the citizens.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Very good. Did I ask? There was no one from the public. Councilwoman Cantino?
Does this include sodium lights?
The, the issue that we brought to the Planning and Zoning Commission and what we are bringing to the, the council tonight is strictly compact fluorescent lighting.
Yeah. And the sodium lights, are those the real bright ones that are in the parking structures and on the side of industrial buildings, I would assume?
I, I'm, I'm not sure, Mayor, which, which lighting that, you know, are on what?
Is that what you understand, Dennis?
Those are street lights, you got it, now, Avenue of the Fountain are also.
Yeah, okay.
Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Dickey.
And knowing also that we value our dark skies here, I know that you kept that in mind, so I think this is a great way to not only reach our goal of being environmental, but also to maintain the dark skies, which is also part of our strategic plan.
Yeah, Mayor Schlum, Councilmember Dickey, that was one of the main points that we discussed in the Planning and Zoning Commission. We researched the International Dark Skies Association's criteria for lighting. We took all that into consideration before they made their determination.
Very good. All right, we will close, even though I didn't get to use my gavel when I could have an extra time. Close the public hearing, and we will consider ordinance 09-01 as presented. Could we get a motion to approve ordinance 0901, the proposed amendments to Chapter 8 of the zoning ordinance, outdoor lighting controls?
Second.
Any other discussion? All right. Now, in favor? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post.
Mayor, seven zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, I know the Planning and Zoning did have a nice discussion that night following our joint meeting, and I saw your board, so that was very helpful and sure. Thank you. Next item, number 15, reported report by the Town Manager on progress of implementing the council's goals for fiscal year '08 and '09.
Thank you, Mayor, council. During a goal-setting retreat in February of 2008, the Town Council identified eight primary goals for fiscal year '08, '09. A second retreat was held with management staff to develop specific implementation plans and identify resources necessary to carry out the goals established by the council. I'm pleased to report to you, based on the reports I have received from departments, that we are well on our way to accomplishing the goals that were set at that time. In fact, we're estimating about 65 percent of total completion. There is one goal, and that is ensure responsible development of element property, which is not on par with the amount of time that has already elapsed in the fiscal year, but I think you understand the reasons for that at this time. But other goals are on track to being completed, and we anticipate all will be completed by the end of the fiscal year. So thank you very much.
Any questions or comments for-
Very, very good. Very good.
Yes, congratulations to the staff and Rick for making progress on the goals we set forward last, for this current fiscal year. Any items for the Town Manager to take away from us here tonight? I don't believe there were. And I guess now I'll be looking for a German after we all root for the Cardinals, I guess, before we-
Motion to adjourn.
Councilman then. Dickey, you had something regarding that?
Well, you gave me an opening by mentioning the Cardinals, that I, I'd like to mention something that I did today.
That's right. You did mention that. I probably missed that.
Well, I went to the, the grand opening, the dedication of the Polly Rosenbaum Estate Archives and History Building. It's on 19th Avenue, right across the street from the, from Capitol area. And I just wanted to mention that because it was very exciting and a long time coming. And I think that in our town, you talked about the Pony Express and the history there, and it just- and it just was very fulfilling to be there, realize that people are embracing the past and people who are involved with planning for the future should always look to the past. And also, obviously Fountain Hills feels that way too, because I think Wednesday night there's a historical museum, our River Time Museum dinner here in town. So, they recognize it, and I just wanted you to know that I was there, representing us and representing state agency, and it was pretty neat.
Good. Thanks for sharing that.
For those of you who don't know, Polly Rosenbaum was a great old Arizona legislator. She served in the legislature probably 50 years, and she died about age 100, didn't she, a few years ago? She's a great gal, and she was a Democrat.
I'll look forward to seeing everybody next time after the Cardinals win, and look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
How about a second?
Second.
All in favor? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you very much. Have a great rest of your week.